Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our four o'clock study session for the May eighth city council meeting. Madam Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present.
Very good, thank you. Before we get into our study session items, I guess we'll have clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Gardner, nothing. Councilman Daigle? Oh, you're back in town, Mr. Webb? Councilman Webb?
I've gone through it and I understand everything.
It's all under control, okay. That's what we like to hear. Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you. On item thirteen, we're filling a vacancy on the Economic Development Committee. It appears as though the committee recommended John Hyatt and that we're now, the recommendation is for Charles Unsworth. Can somebody explain what's going on with that?
Charlie, I don't have the roster in front of me, but I was looking at it earlier. Charles Hyatt is a different, that's the Realtors, I believe.
John Hyatt.
Or John Hyatt.
Yes, he is.
And Charles Unsworth is a member-at-large.
All right, well, it says that on April eighteenth, the EDC committee recommended Mr. John Hyatt be appointed to the EDC as an at-large representative, replacing Jeanette Thomas. And we're, he's already on and therefore we're not doing this, is that what's going on?
John Hyatt was actually appointed on February twenty seventh.
Oh, you know, maybe.
It's a typo.
It's kind of a boilerplate thing.
It's using the same staff report twice, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh, she re-gifted us or re-staffed us.
So it is Mr. Unsworth for the at-large position rather than Mr. Hyatt for the Realtors position.
Good call, Mr. Curry. Anything else? Is that it? Councilman Curry?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Sol, or Mayor Protem Solich?
Nothing.
Okay, and I have nothing as well. So let's move on to our budget overview. Bada bing bada boom. Nancy's looking at me with disdain. With me, good, okay. And who's giving that report? Dennis, I see you.
Dennis is going to provide the report until I.
Chime in.
Chime in, knowing that it's safe, only then will I chime in.
Okay.
So Dennis normally runs through these reports.
Dennis has the Kevlar on tonight?
I think so. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. This is the first study session for the proposed budget for the two thousand seven, two thousand eight fiscal year. Normally what we do at this study session is to give you a macro overview of the budget and then Steve Badham will be presenting the CIP program to you. I have about twenty-six slides. I can go through them in about five minutes and then turn over to Steve.
Five minutes? Sounds good to me.
Just kidding. What we'll be covering today is, of course, the overview of the budget process and the assumptions we use to put the budget together, any new developments and pending issues that we think you should be made aware of. Of course, we'll talk about revenues and expenditures, reserves and fund balance, and then we'll draw some conclusions for you. And please, I know you will, but please interrupt me anytime that you have a question. First, the charter provisions regarding the budget are, as you know, our fiscal year is July first to June thirtieth. The charter delegates the authority for the preparation of the budget to the city manager, who recommends the proposed budget to the city council. It requires submission to the council at least thirty-five days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year. And as you know, we normally try to get it to you around the end of April. It requires public notice in the hearing, which at your next council meeting, May twenty-second, we'll be asking you to set those hearings for, I believe it's June twelfth, both the GAN limit and the budget itself. Of course, council may modify the budget before its adoption, which you'll normally do through the checklist. You have to adopt the budget on or before June thirtieth, so I believe it's scheduled for June twenty-eighth. Of course, the council may amend the budget after its adoption, and you normally do that at almost every council meeting, every agenda, there's a budget amendment on there, more than one. And of course, if it's necessary, council may reduce appropriations if revenues aren't as strong as we had hoped. These are new developments and pending issues that we'd like to talk about. First. Yeah. Yeah, we changed the graphics this year, we were getting bored with the old ones. Of course, we have new facilities that are added to our capital assets, and by that we're referring to Fire Station Number Seven, the Newport Coast Community Center, and Back Bay Science Center, all expected to come online very soon. I've talked before about the MOU negotiations in this fiscal year. All of the miscellaneous associations are in negotiations as we speak, and fire and fire management contracts expire on December thirty-first, so that's going to be addressed as part of the new budget. General plan implementation, cost allocation plan, we're presently conducting a study that should be concluded very soon, hopefully in July. It's a cost of services study as well as a cost allocation plan. Changes in organizational structure, we'll talk about those briefly. Natural gas dispensers, age of our refuse trucks, I know that General Services Director Mark Harmon is going to address that as part of his presentation to you, probably at the next study session. Public safety facility studies. Oasis, CDM Branch Library, as you know, we've got, there's fundraising efforts going on for the Oasis Senior Center, as well as discussion about the Cronod Del Mar Branch Library. And finally, this is not, this list is not exhaustive, but finally Sunset Ridge Park. We owe two more payments to the state for taking possession of that park.
Dennis, a couple of questions. Regarding the cost allocation plan, I know that won't be done in time to be included in the budget for next year, but in general, how would you expect that the adoption of that updated information will affect revenues and expenses?
Typically, what we've done, when we had the old, when we used the old cost allocation plan, we came back to you right after budget adoption with recommended new fees based upon a CPI and a labor component, and I believe this is going to be very similar. I have not factored in any increases in our charges for services, but I would anticipate they'll be in the four to five percent range.
Four to five percent?
Yes.
Applied against what dollar base roughly?
Dennis, it shouldn't have any effect on our expenditures, I would think.
Yeah, I'm thinking this is a pure revenue increase.
Total charges for services as proposed in this budget is thirteen point seven million.
So four to five percent increase against thirteen point seven million?
Correct.
Okay. And then with regard to the payments on Sunset Ridge Park, those are already, are those already reserved?
They are, yes, sir. They're not appropriated, but they are reserved.
Okay.
This is an organization chart, the way that we're structured, the big, the only change, I think, from the current year, or at least in last year's proposed budget, is both planning and building now report to the Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. I know this is hard for you to read, and it's also included on page six of your resource These are the items that are included in the budget. Again, the list is not exhaustive, but things that you should be aware of. Council reserve fund policies, your reserve policies are fully funded, all approved positions are included in the budget, all negotiated, or all step increases are included as part of the budget. The additional deleted positions, which we'll address later on in the slide presentation, are all included. Any reclassifications, ceiling adjustments, known MOU increases for the contracts that are already in effect, and of course, the city manager approves supplementals. I can go through some of these items if you'd care to see them in more detail. Ceiling adjustments that are included totaled about four point one million dollars, and that includes such items as equipment maintenance replacement of four hundred and forty-four thousand. There are some ABLE, the airborne law enforcement program costs about two hundred thousand for new training and equipment. Human resources increased litigation account by eighty thousand. Fire Station Number Seven, thirty thousand for maintenance. Those type of things that are included as ceiling adjustments. Again, I can go in more detail if you'd like it.
Quick question. What is the staffing effect of Fire Station Number Seven?
There's no effect.
Okay. None expected?
None expected. We'll just transfer the people from the temporary facility over to the.
How do you account, or do you account for the employees that, or employee vacancy factor, I guess, I'm not sure what the technical term is, but we're never fully staffed and yet we budget for a fully staffed situation?
That's correct. That's really a decision that not only this city faces, but every city faces. How do you, or should you factor for vacancy? We chose, we choose not to, but we do look at that throughout the fiscal year and constantly update our estimate of salary savings, is what we call them, salary and benefit savings. I know some cities, we're not in that position, but I've talked to my colleagues, some cities have to factor in a vacancy factor simply to balance their budget, and we haven't faced that yet.
It is a very conservative way in order to budget, by budgeting all of the positions at one hundred percent of their salary, but then at the end of the year, the salary savings goes into the reserve fund, so it isn't like, you know, people are using it for other things.
What does that typically run a year? Is it percentage of the salary budget?
It's been quite large in the last few years, simply because of, mostly because of our public safety retirements, where, you know, some of the older employees are, some of the older safety employees are retiring and we're replacing them with younger, cheaper, less expensive employees. It's been upwards of two to three million dollars in the past several years. That number is decreasing. Susan, do you have a number for this year?
Right now, it's about one point two million.
We're projecting one point two for the current year.
And we have another slide that will talk about the supplemental budgets above and beyond the ceiling, the things that I included in the budget and my reasons why.
We have some things that we consider to be one-time expenditures that are included in the budget that's before you, that will not reoccur. That's Newport Coast Community Center, FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. We have five new vehicles that we're adding to the fleet simply because of the, mainly because of the new facilities. Helicopter pilot training, which is not an ongoing item, that you only do it periodically. Live scan fingerprint machines, cardiac monitors, which is, are being paid for out of the HOG Reserve or the paramedic reserve, utility sewer camera, and then a police dog for about eighty-four hundred dollars. So these are things that we don't normally buy every year, but they are in the budget that's before you.
Quick question. The FFNE and the new vehicles don't really hit the expense line items, right? The FFNE would be in the capital improvements and the vehicle additions would be in your internal service fund?
Yeah, the FFNE is in a capital outlay item, not in, it's not in capital projects, but it's in capital outlay, that's true. And the new vehicles, typically what we do, Councilman Hen, is when it's a brand-new vehicle that was never in our fleet before, we do charge the departments for that, but then from that point forward, it gets depreciated, and whenever you replace that vehicle at some point down the road, it does come out of the internal service.
Okay, so those new vehicles then would be a one-time expense increase this year?
That's correct, and that totals about a hundred and ninety thousand.
I have a question for you. Do we have, currently have police dog?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we have a couple, don't we?
Apparently have two dogs. Full staff is three, we just didn't go back to the third dog.
Okay. Somewhere along the line, cities did away with fire dogs. Is there, I was just kind of curious what the history is on that?
Dalmatians, you mean?
Dalmatians, yeah.
I, in my seventeen years here, we've never had a fire dog that I can recall. The city I was in before did have them, and the fire chief said they're the dumbest animals in the world.
They actually are using them in search and rescue, the urban search and rescue, but not for sitting on vehicles.
So we have three FCEs, right? Canine?
Equivalents.
Equivalents, yeah, okay.
We have some reoccurring council grants that are included in the budget. Typically, we, in years past at least, we've put these on the checklist, but the council has routinely approved them, and so the suggestion was made last year that since we routinely, since the council routinely approves them, let's just go ahead and include them in the budget. And as you can see, we have seventy-five thousand dollar grant for the athletic complex at Stansie High School. This is the third year, third and final year of that grant. Belbo Island Historical Society support, Belbo Island Improvement Association support, CDM Chamber, et cetera, et cetera. What I should point out to you is there's some things that are not included in here that you may get a request for to include. First one is Michael's Media at ninety-nine hundred dollars. We've included that in the past, then a couple of years we didn't, and then it somehow made it back into the budget, so you may get a request for that. We have not included money for the conference for women, because I didn't know if we were going to suggest doing that again next year, but it's ten thousand dollars in the past two fiscal years. And then we did not include the fifty thousand dollar support from the Newport Beach Restaurant Association or Restaurant Week, but I saw a request for that today, so that will, just be aware that that will be coming before you. As I mentioned before, there's certain items that are not included in this budget. MOU increases not yet negotiated. We've set money aside for those MOUs. It's just an estimate, we don't know ultimately what the council's going to approve, so there's money set aside, but there's nothing included in this budget in the line item appropriations for those increases. Once, once the council approves the MOUs, we'll administratively adjust the budgets accordingly. There's no, the five point five million dollars from the county for Fire Station Number Seven reimbursement is not included in the budget. We've got a good indication that that may happen, but rather than counting on it, we did not put it in the budget. Of course, supplementals that were not recommended by the city manager are not included in this budget, and we have a slide later on to show you what those are. CIP is not recommended for funding, Steve will talk further about those. There's no money included for construction in Newport Center Park, nor for the performance benchmark study that you recently requested at the Saturday study session, so once we determine, get a better handle on what that may cost, we'll put, probably put that on the budget checklist for inclusion as part of the budget. Looking at my notes here, the supplemental requests that were approved by the city manager were a total of approximately one million, the requests that weren't approved totaled about one point two million. Unfunded CIP request for the general fund was six point five million, total of seven point seven million. There's not money included for Marina Park, Oasis Senior Center, Back Bay View, park enhancements, et cetera.
Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Can we go back to that other slide again real quick?
If I can figure out how.
Yeah. Weren't we supposed to get like seven and a half million or something from the county on that fire station?
You know, that number, maybe Homer could answer that better than I. That, that number, I heard various different numbers for it. I think I did hear seven and a half at one point, but I think.
Well, when we approved construction of the fire station, wasn't that what we were looking at?
I believe that was the number we were looking at.
The five point five million is new money, Councilman, so the previous two point five for the station itself, and then one, one point five, I think, for the land. Anyway, that, that came to four point one. We've already received, I think, the, the land value, so the two and a half million for the station would be on top of this.
I happen to have a staff report handy, only because we're going to talk about annexation and seeing, I think that Supervisor Morlock's conceptual, conceptually approved funding was the seven point three million, so that's probably where you're picking that number from.
But again, as the city manager says, we have already received a little over two million, so this is an additional five point five.
Well, I just remember from when we, when we voted on the, on the contract, and I seem to remember it was like seven and a half million dollars somewhere in that neighborhood was what we were expecting to get back from the county. I'm not talking about what they're offering now, but what we were expecting at that point in time, and I seem to recall the total cost of that facility somewhere in excess of eleven million dollars, including all of the land acquisition, et cetera.
That's right.
It gets really confusing, because there's so many different pies that it's being funded out of, and the numbers keep changing around, and every time I look at something, I see it, you know, a different number pumping up there, so it's hard to keep track of it.
We should get, by the time all is said and done, nine point six million dollars from the county.
I think the problem, and I agree with Councilman Solich, it is kind of frustrating, is that initially, I think we were led to believe that the county was going to reimburse us wholly for whatever we were out of the redevelopment agency funding, and especially when we thought we were going to get the redevelopment agency, we'd be able to reimburse ourselves, and obviously, county is, you know, taking a different tact on that, and they're, they're not planning on passing the redevelopment agency off to us, and so I think the money that he's, they have up there is basically what Supervisor Morlock has recommended to his colleagues on the board as what he feels is a fair distribution from those RDA funds that are on deposit, so.
But remember, this, this is additional money, because we had the previous agreement with the county to where they would pay us the four point one. So last fall, whenever this new agreement was entered into, it didn't negate our, you know, the previous agreement, so we're still have that agreement for the four point one, and then the new agreement for the five point five.
Right. Their position, as I recall from sitting down with John, was that legally, all they were bound to do was give us the four point one million. We only had legal paperwork to say you are entitled to four point one million, and I basically said to him, I said, "Well, legally, that may be so in paper," I said, "but I think morally and ethically, you folks basically led us to believe that you're going to reimburse us one way or another, you know, either through the former supervisor Silva or through the county, you know, administrator." And, you know, here we acted in good faith upon your oral representations, yeah, they may not be in writing, and here we are in the, you know, almost done building the thing. It's cost us a lot more money than we ever thought, and, you know, you owe us something out of this redevelopment agency to reimburse us for our going out on a limb, and so this is basically what he's saying he owes us, or that's their commitment.
Yeah, it might be helpful to, because I know that Dave Kiff, he, he did a chart for me back when we were doing the contract, then he did an updated one after that that showed where the different funding sources were and all the costs what the county had committed to that maybe kind of update that so we can see how things have changed.
Likewise, there are expenditures in the current budget that we've removed from the proposed budget for two thousand seven, eight fiscal year, things that we're not going to repeat. Five hundred thousand dollars for the centennial celebration. We weren't expecting any council elections, so we took it, reduced the budget by a hundred thousand, although that may change. We reduced fares issues to a hundred and seventy-five thousand from four hundred thousand in the current fiscal year. Reduced three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the general plan update. The two hundred and ninety thousand dollar commitment or grant to the Newport Mesa School District for the CDM pool, two hundred and ninety thousand is, was a one-time expenditure that's not in this budget. We have an end-of-a-computer copy or lease agreements of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Short-term contracts for the cost allocation study, Oasis conceptual study, et cetera, was a hundred and eighty thousand, and then seventy-five thousand for the John Wayne Film Festival Celebration, that was one-time expenditure.
Dennis, I just wanted to comment on the CDM pool, that the school district and the community did fulfill their part of the obligation, and so was, I believe, we'll be presenting the check to them.
That's what, that's what I understand, and we'll be preparing the check for two hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay, thank you.
You've all seen this slide before, but I'll go over it briefly. This is the preparation process that we go through. In November, we begin the process with updating projections for the current fiscal year. December, we prepare preliminary revenue estimates, because that's really what we base our budget upon. January, we establish our budget ceilings for the departments. February, March, we go through the review with the city manager. April, the budget is printed and presented to you at the end of the month, and then, of course, May and June is budget review, public hearings, and budget adoption. This is the budget structure for the city. Of course, the general fund is a key operating fund in the city's budget, is what most of the attention is focused upon. We have special revenue funds, the revenue is restricted for a specific purpose, such as state gas tax, major M, environmental liability, et cetera. We do have two enterprise funds for water and wastewater, and then, as Councilman Hen mentioned, we have internal service funds. These are funds that raise their premiums from the operating budgets for insurance reserve, retired medical, compensated absence, and equipment maintenance and replacement.
Under the contributions, a large part of that is these grants that we, that we receive, right?
It's, it's any money that comes to us from an outside source. It could be a development agreement, it could be a grant, anything that's contributed to the city. You don't do the project unless you get the money, so it's almost like a placeholder.
So, so when you, so when you put these in here, these are, these are contributions that you expect to get in that fiscal year, not necessarily the contribution that we may have gotten a grant for, but we don't get the contribution till, you know, say, the next fiscal year?
That's exactly right.
This is what comes in the current fiscal year?
It's our best knowledge at the time, we will put it in the contribution fund, and as I said, if, for whatever reason, if the contribution's not received, then the project's not started.
Same way with development agreements and things like that. If we know we have a development agreement and we expect that fifty percent of it's going to come in one year, fifty percent the next year, then you'll allocate it that way?
Yes.
And Dennis, we probably need to talk about that for just a minute, because I don't think we put anything in, in the budget for revenues for development agreements.
No, that was just an example I used.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Don't spend it until we got it.
Speaking a little bit about the general fund, as I mentioned, this is the budget that receives the most attention, the most interest for the residents, is used to account for resources that are not required to be accounted for in another fund, such as a special revenue fund. It represents the discretionary revenues and expenditures for the city, and this year, revenues are projected to be a hundred and forty-seven million, which is seventy percent of the total city revenues, and expenditures are estimated at a hundred and forty-one million, which is about sixty-eight percent of the city's total operating budget. budget. You know, you can read them as well as I. No, this is how we budget for our revenues, known factors, historical analysis, state and county issues that we're aware of, the economy, anything that we're aware there. For instance, slowdown in the housing market would affect our property tax, which is our number one revenue source. Economic development.
Are you going to go into estimates about that later on, or?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Growth expectations, and then, of course, most importantly, is department input. The departments for things such as planning and building fees, recreation fees, library fees, et cetera, they're the experts and we rely heavily upon them for that input. Total revenue, all funds, this, not just the general fund, but all funds for the city is 211 million dollars. We've got the percentages of what makes those things up. Property tax is 34%, other sales and other taxes 19%, et cetera. Enterprise revenue is 11%.
What's the source of the internal service fund revenue?
I'm going to explain that more in detail later on, but the source of the internal service fund revenue is really premiums that we charge the operating departments. So it could be, we charged the police department a premium for general liability, and that money is budgeted once in the general fund under the police department. It's budgeted a second time in the internal service fund. And that's why you'll see a chart later on where we net those fees out because we don't want to count them twice. So the.
Okay, because that's what it's looking to me like, like we're counting it twice in this chart here.
Didn't you know we print money in the back there?
You'll see a chart later on where those numbers are excluded.
We smoothed it out.
Specifically, general fund revenues, as I mentioned, totals about 147 million dollars. Property taxes, 73 million. The increase over the current year, 3.67. This is what Mayor Wazanski, you asked me about if I was going to show you what our estimates were. We're estimating property taxes going up 3.67%.
What's it been over the last few years?
Over the last 25 years, specifically secured property taxes has averaged about 8% over the last 25 years.
Okay, so that's even with, I mean.
In the last few years, it's been in the range of 8, 9, 10%.
Because, I mean, it's, obviously, some homes are selling for less than what they were, but I imagine that there's still a number of homes that are, we're going to get a bump just because they haven't been reassessed in 30 years, even if they're selling less than with the last one.
That's correct. I mean, I'm not concerned at all that we're going to see any large assessment decrease. It's simply because the gap between the assessed value and the market value is so great, even if the value, market value is flat or even coming down a little bit, the gap still is so huge that I don't think that.
Right, so like even if we lose on a few that are, were maybe sold recently and now being resold, there's many more that have not been sold in a long time that'll outweigh that.
That's correct.
Plus, you get the benefit of increased increases in assessed valuation for new construction.
New construction, remodeling, new homes coming online. There's still some in Newport Coast, so we're being conservative with 3.67%.
Good, thank you.
Dennis, I noticed that other, in taxes other than property, it looks like there's a slight, oh, okay, I misread that, I'm sorry.
The big decrease, and it's dollar-wise, percentage-wise, it looks like a big decrease. Dollar-wise, it's about $4 million. That's intergovernmental, and that's grants that we see, receive from either the state or federal government like U.A.C. or COPS More, those sort of things. Those are going away, and so we would not budget for them in the new fiscal year.
So Dennis, I don't know if you did this calculation, I guess it'd be easy enough, excluding intergovernmental and, what's the other big decline there? Other revenues, right? You could get, you could get sort of a run rate change in revenue.
Yeah, I did not, but yeah, you could do that. It looks to me like.
It's going to be in the range of 3, 4%.
Exactly. We like to focus on the general fund. These are the big three that we mentioned. Secured property taxes going up, we estimate 4%. Sales tax increasing 4.2%, and that has to do with the Lexus dealership. We're going to start receiving our 50% of that sales tax during the fourth quarter. And transient occupancy tax, we're estimating a 5% increase. That's primarily due to, we had some hotels that were offline remodeling in the past fiscal year, and those are like the Marriott is back online, so we expect at least a 5% increase.
Since you just mentioned about the Newport Lexus and our obligation with them, is there any benefit to paying that obligation down quicker?
There may be because they're charging us 5% interest. So yes, if we paid it down quicker, there may be an advantage there. I have not run those numbers. I know that when the negotiations were going on, they were insistent upon the interest component.
Yeah, I think that could be argued both ways as to whether there's any benefit. It depends upon if you want to use a lot of money that you have that's liquid right now and apply it towards that, or you just are willing to carry the interest over time and let, as people purchase the cars, let them pay that off.
Well, they'd still be paying it off. We just, I'm not saying to use more than, I'm saying the sales tax dollars generated are in excess of what we owe on a yearly basis. Is that accurate or not?
And it's probably at this point, maybe Dick could answer it, he does the investments, but I think we're earning around 5% on our investments now, so, you know.
It's a wash on that.
It seems to be pretty much of a wash.
Okay, thank you.
This is how we estimate expenditures. Of course, 70% of our budget is personnel. We use, you asked the question earlier, all authorized positions are allocated to division funds based upon department recommendations. We fully fund those at the current step of the people that are occupying those positions. And all the personnel costs, salaries and benefits are computed by admin services. We don't, you know, it's just the computer spits them out. We extract in December and based upon the current population, we just budget everybody at 100%. M and O costs, that's maintenance and operation, consists primarily of approved contracts, utilities, equipment, and things that we know or estimate. And then there's controllable costs such as newer replacement of equipment based on historical department justification and trends. These are expenditures, all funds, including the internal service funds. If you think back to the revenue slide, that was 211 million. Our total expenditures are estimated at 208 million, almost 209 million. The internal service funds makes up 7% of that total.
Dennis, one of the things that I thought was most interesting in reading the budget summary is that the proposed '07, '08 budget is actually, excluding CIP and internal charges, is actually less than last year's charges. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think it's down less, a little less than 1%, as I recall.
Right. Can you sort of, I think that's a phenomenal accomplishment, I think the community ought to know about. Can you sort of talk about the reasons why that's the case since we're excluding the CIP and the internal service funds from that calculation?
I would imagine some of it has to do with some grants that we expended from this year.
I'm looking at the chart on page six, Roman numeral six, in the rap. And it said, our general fund operating budget is actually up 0.47% from 131, 0.8 million to 132, 0.4 million. But again, recognize that we have employee contracts for over half our workforce that are expiring on June 30, and those are not included in this budget. We've set money aside as part of our reserves to fund those, any increases, but they're not shown as part of the budget. So I think once you factor that in, then the budget would probably be up 3 to 4%. Here's where we sort of exclude the internal charges. If you refer to the previous slide, I mentioned the total budget expenditures or appropriations of about 209 million dollars. But once you exclude those internal charges, which are double-charged, if you will, our net budget is really 193 million dollars. This is a question that I face every year because every year I get a call from the Orange County Register and the Daily Pilot, LA Times, says, what's your budget? You know, and I've got to figure out which number to give them because I don't want to mislead anybody, of course. So I always need to probe with the reporter about, well, what are you really looking for? General fund, operating, CIP, net of internal charges, et cetera. And I get the same questions from other cities because we survey each other and I say, what's your, what's your budget? Again, you've got to ask the question, well, what do you really want to know about it? Any questions on this slide? This slide is kind of hard for you to see, and I know Homer's going to talk a little bit more about it. But these are the supplemental budget requests that the departments submitted as part of their budget. They total 3.2 million dollars. We approved, Homer, the city manager, approved about 1.7 million. Much of that was offset by revenue, nearly half a million dollars. So the net increase was a little over a million dollars. And yet, there's 1.2 million of supplemental requests that were not approved as part of this budget submittal, and I think the city manager wants to delve into that a little more.
Well, as Dennis talked about earlier, as a part of our budget process, then we give ceilings to all of the departments. And anything that goes over that ceiling, if there is a special project or if there are new positions that are being requested, then those fall into the supplemental budget request. So this is what the departments came back to me with, saying that we would like to do certain things and they don't fall within our ceiling. So then we sit down, Dennis and staff and I sit down and we review exactly what these supplemental programs entail, whether they are budgets, whether they are equipment, whether they are vehicles, or whatever. Certainly, I think the largest approved there is in recreation, 622,000 dollars, and that is because of the Newport Coast Community Center coming online. And we have a couple of positions that we need to fund, at least in my opinion, in order to make sure that we have that facility operating and reasonably staffed. We're still going to use part-time employees for that, but there is some equipment that needs to be provided for and also a couple of positions. We'll talk just a little later about the positions, but there are some other positions as far as general services. And again, this has to do with the Newport Coast, assuming more responsibilities for park and open spaces up there and also for contract administration. So I think general services is just at the point to where they keep getting more and more as far as responsibilities are concerned and the demands. As far as the quality of how things need to look never is reduced. And that department in particular, I thought, needed some help in terms of some more personnel resources.
On the fire, there's quite a discrepancy between what was requested and what is approved.
Yes, that was the fourth man on the fire truck, so it was three positions that was being requested and that, I think, totaled about 450,000. So looked at that one long and hard, and while I think it is something that is needed, I just did not feel like we could afford that big a hit in the budget. But I certainly intended on bringing that to the city council and saying that that was something that was requested. And I think a strong case can be made for, and you can talk to the chief more about that when he gives his budget presentation, but I just felt like that was too big a hit to bring to the city council when we had some other needs that I thought just were have-tos.
Question for you on the library. You go over to the library on a Sunday afternoon, it's packed. What are the current operating hours on Sunday and are we proposing any changes, opening early or anything like that?
We aren't proposing any changes in operating hours.
I believe it's 12 to 6.
Yeah, I was going to.
Or 12 to 5.
I was going to say 11 to 5, but I think you're probably right.
So what would the 68,000 be for then?
Let me see, there's a Mariners book drop that we are going to install because we think that will be a popular thing, replacing some windows at the Balboa Branch, and a new vehicle. They need a vehicle in order to connect with the branch libraries and the central library, and a new vehicle is included in there also. I think there are maybe a couple of part-time positions.
Does this include the service for Newport Coast?
Yes, it does. That vehicle would also be used to service Newport Coast, thank you.
And they had a vehicle up until several years ago, and they gave it up as a budget controlling item. But there's, it's got to the point now where they just, they can't always rely upon people using their own vehicles to run back and forth. So they really, they made a good case that they needed a vehicle put back in the budget. And it's one of those five that I mentioned before, that the initial hit is going to come out of the library budget in the future or come out of the internal service fund.
Given the popularity of the library in the community, do we know ballpark what it costs to open it an hour or so earlier?
We did review that a few years ago because I think we did add some hours to one of the branch libraries, but that isn't something that we looked at this year. We could certainly try and come up with some estimates on that.
I'd be interested in what it costs.
Linda's going to be here with her budget.
Yeah, sure.
So that's probably a good time to ask her.
Thank you.
I would, would you mind, I'd like to just get the line item detail in support of these categories, particularly the approved and the not approved. I'd just like to see the description behind all of these numbers as we're heading into the department.
Yeah, we'll email that to the council.
We couldn't get them all on the PowerPoint slide because they probably would have been about seven or eight, but I would like to.
That's fine, I just would like to be able to see it.
Sure. I would like to point out a couple of highlights. As far as general services, I did include 78,000 for a household hazardous waste program for us to start up this budget year.
Is that going to include a large item pickup as well, or?
No, that was.
We talked about that.
That was requested, a bulk item collection program of 48,000. Did not choose to fund that. Let me see if there are any other very large numbers in here. Cable pilot training at 58,000. The LifeScan fingerprint equipment for the police department at 71,000. Some additional traffic signal maintenance at 30,000. The Newport Coast Community Center, though, was 568,000, so that was the largest one.
What's this, it's not coming to recreation, that's why it's so big?
Yes, it comes into recreation.
What's the offset there? It's a fairly large offset.
Well, they're going to be running programs and there are going to be classes that will be offered, and there will also be, the gym is going to be, you know, rented for classes and for adult recreation, so we think that that is the offset that we're going to see as far as revenue generated from those programs.
That's like almost a thousand dollars a day, that's a lot of revenue.
Question for you on the supplemental, assuming then there's a base that that supplemental is going from that ceiling, how was that ceiling established this year? I know how we've done it in the past, but how did you get that base number that we then are adding supplemental to? What does the base number consist of?
The way we do it, Councilman Dagel, is we come up with what we consider to be the baseline budget. In other words, the services that we're currently providing. And we ask each department, assuming that that's the level of service that the community wants, we fund, we ask the departments if there's anything that's beyond their control, like the cost of gasoline and the cost of electricity. If they, the cost of landfill increases, if they're known, things like that, things that are simply beyond what we consider beyond the control of the department, we'll go ahead and adjust their baseline budget for those items. But we tell them if there's any new programs, if there's new people, if there's anything above and beyond what they're currently doing, then that has to go on a supplemental request.
That baseline, you build in an increase, like 3% increase or something from last year?
No, sir. Only for those things.
So you basically start with what the budget was last year for those baseline items?
We start with what the budget, current budget is, and again, we do increase it if they make a good case to us about something that's beyond their control, but we don't just add 3% for like a cost of living increase. That all has to be on a supplemental request.
Thank you. Compensation increases are generally covered, other than the MOU issue that you mentioned earlier.
Correct.
And so fundamentally, what we're doing is ratifying the organization and expense to. structure that was in place, the ongoing organization and expense structure. That gets ratified, and then we build on top of that.
Right. And, you know, the baseline budget, if you will, you know, it develops over many years. If you think back to the mid-'90s, when we really were struggling financially, we reduced the budget. And there's a chart in here that will show you what our employee population went down to. We really cut deeply. And then to build that back up over a period of years, it was, we went through this process with the city council about making recommendations, about we're not doing a good job here, we're not doing a good job there, and we need to add people, or we need to add appropriations for whatever. And then so, we got off to what we are comfortable with as a baseline budget. But it is, it's status quo. You start with what you had the current year, and then you add to that.
Okay. So let's say a supplemental with general services, where you add two positions, then next year, that, those two positions get ratcheted into our baseline?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
By the way, while I funded two positions for general services, they asked for two additional positions that I did not fund. So Mark is going to cover that in his presentation.
Can you explain what happened in the planning department? I don't understand that footnote on the bottom.
What happened there, I believe what happened there is, and maybe Dave can illuminate, but they asked for several things that were included as part of their budget that we went ahead and funded in the current fiscal year. So that actually reduced their budget request. Or their total budget. In other words, they had money included in there for-
Remind me, Susan.
Homer reduced their 80-80 account for fresh water expenses during the MOU. And then the general plan update expenses that they had proposed for '08 ended up being funded in '07.
Because you approved a budget amendment several meetings ago, about $451,000 for general plan implementation. They had asked for that. And that occurred after they'd made their budget submittal, so we removed that item, and several like that.
Okay. Does that include the, or does the hiring of the assistant planners, the plant checkers, is that affecting this too somehow?
No, it shouldn't. It's in the base.
That's in the base already.
It's in the base, but all of those people have not been hired yet.
So basically, this reflects the fact that we added the general plan update number, it sounds like. And even though that's going to carry on into the next fiscal year, we budget for it in this fiscal year?
Correct. Because we'll go ahead and encumber those funds.
And Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, those positions which may not be filled yet are part of the base, then?
That's true, yeah. That's correct.
So it sounds to me like the new guy tried to sneak a couple by you there, and you caught him, huh?
And basically, that general plan update is the zoning code rewrite. I mean, that was the big number, that zoning code contract.
I'm not sure it was the new guy. I think that the new guy that he's reporting to may have tried to sneak one past you.
I spoke just a second ago about our budgeted positions. You can see that this number was actually, I think, in the prior year was 767. We just didn't go back that far. We got down in, I can't even read that, whatever fiscal year is, about '93, we got down to 662 employees, which was our low point. We really cut deeply into the organization, and then we're increased into this budget. We're recommending 819 positions. If you notice from the note at the bottom, during this period of time, the city's population increased from 67,000 to 83,000, which was a 23% increase. And the workforce has increased only 7.4% from this number to this number. So we're actually proud of that, I think. Yes, it was '95, '96 was the 662 low point.
On this slide, we show the new positions that I'm recommending. And we start off with the marine refuse supervisor. This has always been a part-time position. But we keep getting more and more complaints from the public as to what they are seeing taking place there. And it just seems to me like it is time to try and make that position full-time so we can give more time to protecting the tide pools, which are being assaulted on almost a daily basis. The public information officer, one of the city council's priorities, was to come up with a comprehensive program whereby we would be communicating on a regular basis with the residents of the community. And while Mary Lee now is totally dedicated 100% of her time to video and council meetings and programs, what I would like to see with this position is a public information officer that basically handles making sure that our website is up to date, has current information, that that information changes on a regular basis, helping me put out the newsletters and doing all of the things that we would really expect to see. And it's my desire to have the communications committee from the city council, you know, help me work up exactly what that comprehensive communication program would look like, and what kind of position that we really need in order to handle those kinds of things. The park supervisor and the grounds worker, too, position are both in general services. We have more and more contracts that we really need to oversee as far as parks and also open spaces in the Newport Coast. And it's my intent to add a park supervisor position in order to do that. The grounds worker, one position, is because we are adding some new facilities. We're adding the fire station and also the community center, and we need another body in order to help us take care of those particular sites. The department assistant and also the facilities maintenance worker, too, recreation positions are both for the Newport Coast Community Center. The department assistant is somebody who would be there, you know, during the day, and the facility maintenance person would be doing facilities maintenance there and doing the setup and takedown whenever there are meetings and certain uses for not only the gymnasium, but also the recreation rooms. So I think we're really getting by as slightly as we can as far as the opening of that big facility. And it's going to be heavily used and only looking at doing it with two full-time positions and also a number of part-time positions. The department assistant in utilities is really coming at a cost of, we have two part-time positions now, and those positions would be deleted and turning that into a full-time position. We think we need that as far as consistency is concerned, and that our operation would be better because of it. We do have a couple of deletions as far as the deputy city attorney, that has already taken place, and also a department assistant. So Robin has done a little reorganization in her department. And she wants some part-time help as far as some legal help is concerned. But these positions would actually be deletions from what we currently have. And we'll be talking more about these positions when the department has come before you and present their budgets.
So on the city attorney thing, are we looking at doing like more contract legal services in addition to the part-time, or?
Yes. The concept for the deletion of the deputy city attorney position was to change the budget to reflect the direct needs that the department had. So the idea would be to replace that position with a paralegal position to take over some of the non-directly legal issues that a city, that an attorney doesn't necessarily have to do, and then have additional money that would be, as part of that budgetary savings, go into the city's 80-80 account for outside legal services.
So this shows the net cost of those positions that I just reviewed. It's $195,000. And that comes out of the, of the $1.7 million approved, then $200,000 of that was based on new position.
Doesn't that, with what Robin just said about the going with more contract services, isn't that an offset to the savings for the city attorney position, the deputy city attorney position?
Essentially, it is. I think the department budget in total is about the same as it was the prior year.
Yeah. My, the department budget is, doesn't change. I reworked, reorganized so that the staffing was more efficient for the services and provides a little bit of extra money in the 80-80 account. But that would be an area for savings if the council wanted to delete that account, or not delete the account, but reduce that account.
A couple of slides ago, when I talked about the employee population, I had mentioned that we've got, we got down to the low point in total employees, full-time employees, in 1995. It's also, when we got down to the low point in our general fund fund balance, we got down to about $8.5 million, which is dangerously low, I think, for a city of this size and this complexity. We're back up to $53 million. We're relatively stable over the last couple of years. It looks like we've gone down a little bit, but that's simply the completion of some major capital improvements. So those monies were saved up over a number of years to complete a project, whether it was Corona Doma State Beach or whatever, Fire Station Number 7. We spent those monies down. They came out of reserves. So we're, again, we're at about $53 million in the current year.
So Dennis, once again, I mean, going back to the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station, the $5.5 million is not in there?
It is not in here. Just simply a breakdown of the $53 million figure that I gave you. We have a contingency reserve that is fully funded per council policy. It's 12% of our total general fund appropriations. We have other reserves that the capital reserve is used to finance capital projects that go on more than one year. We have an operating surplus of around $5 million. We've got some specific reserves, affordable housing, senior citizen site, in-lug parking fees, et cetera. We do have, I direct your attention to the bottom, we do have a $14 million reserve for capital improvements. That's what we said would be in there at the conclusion of this fiscal year. We're not recommending that that, at least as part of this budget, we're not recommending increasing that. But of course, you could shift any of these funds down there if you so desired, if so directed. And we have a $5 million reserve for PERS rate changes. That number was once upon a time up to $9 million. You listened to the presentation at the last study session. We think that the need for that reserve is somewhat diminished because of their new rate smoothing methods, but we still maintain $5 million for future PERS rate increases. That money could be reprogrammed as well.
But you're not increasing that number either. It's just static-
Correct.
-in the budget. And what has been our history for utilization of the contingency reserve? Have we ever actually used that reserve?
Not since it's been established. It was never, it was originally set at 15%. At the time of the Orange County bankruptcy, it was lowered to 10%. The finance committee at that time thought it was not large enough. They recommended it go back up to 12%. Since it was funded at that level, it has never been used.
Dennis, do the interest earnings on our reserves stay within those reserve subaccounts, or do they go to the general fund?
It depends, Councilman Curry, on which fund it's in. If it's in the water fund or the wastewater fund, it stays within those funds because those are business funds. If it's in the special revenue fund, it stays within that special revenue fund as required by law. But if it's not specifically designated to remain within the fund, then it would go to the general fund.
Dennis, on the park in Lufy's, my understanding, which may or may not be correct, is that the reason we're not spending that is we're holding that reserve for the Sunset Ridge Park. Is that right?
I believe most of it's been in reserve for Sunset Ridge Park, yes.
I'd like to come back to this question on earnings on the reserves. Do you budget for that?
Yes. Yes, there's a line item included as a revenue estimate, 54, account 5,400.
Pardon?
Account 5,400. So if you went through the revenue detail, any fund that had an account 5,400 means that fund earns interest based upon its fund balance.
Okay.
This is my last slide, and this was put in here at the suggestion of Susan. By the way, I should acknowledge people that work in administrative services that work so hard on this budget, including Dick, Dan, Susan, and Steve. There's others as well. The folks in the print shop, I mean, we give it to them at the very last minute. We give it to them on Wednesday. We say, "We want this to go out Friday," you know? So it's a yeoman's job by everybody involved. Just for the public's information, all of our budget documents are included on our website. So anybody can look at it online. And that concludes at least my portion of the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. Any questions more, Dennis, before we move on to the CIP portion?
I did want to suggest one thing, just to be sure the council people are aware of it. The '06, '07 estimated numbers by department in here were for nine months only. So those are not full-year estimates, if you happen to be wondering why we seem to be doing so well in '06 and '07 on our expenditures.
That's correct. We discovered that about 30 seconds after we sent you out the budget. So it's too late to correct that. It'll be corrected in the final document, but it's nine months through March.
Can't we just shut down for three months?
Could.
I would hope. Okay, Senator Badham.
Steve, if I can just give a little introduction. I think last year, for the first time, we had the CIP being reviewed by Steve in the first meeting. And it previously had always been in the last meeting. So I thought it was something that was, had more interest on the part of the city council to do it up early so that we can get a lot of questions and understanding out early on. And I think that will flow better as far as reviewing the department's budgets. We have basically a little less than an hour, but don't feel like you only have an hour for the budget review because we'll come back and do this again in two weeks as a beginning of the next study session and the budget review. So, you know, feel free to take as long as you want in reviewing the CIP because we know it's an important part of the budget for you.
Just for my benefit, then, when we go through the department budgets, we'll have another chance to talk about CIPs by department. Is that the intent?
Yes, you can talk about CIPs as department-specific with the department directors, yes.
They aren't going to necessarily review those CIPs, but I think some of the things that they will say will certainly allude to some of the CIPs that they will be involved in.
All right. Well, I guess I'll just get into it. As Homer said, you know, the CIP, and as indicated on this slide, is a big part of the big puzzle. And hopefully, we can give you some insight on how this piece of the puzzle fits into the city's budget. Essentially, the CIP serves as a funding plan for our public improvements, special projects, capital projects, and so on. You know, we're really trying to implement the city's master plan. We're trying to maintain our infrastructure at certain levels, keep the city up to the level that the public expects. Our projects include a lot of CIP and rehab, I mean, a lot of construction and rehabilitation of the streets and highways, storm drains, the bay, the beaches, parks, buildings, water and sewer, and some planning projects to kind of see where we want to be or where we're going. It's a tool for project planning. Essentially, we have a, you know, it's our roadmap to kind of accomplish the objectives that the council sets. Along with it, it sets the priorities and appropriates the funds that are necessary to accomplish the goals that you've set for us. We also look at relational planning, and we try to identify conflicts. That's quite often the reason why certain projects are advanced forward, to be combined with others. So there's some economy and efficiency, as well as to minimize the disruption and costs and scheduling. And of course, this document constantly evolves. As we know, in this past year, it evolved quite a bit, where we added projects and set projects aside as the council desires, and the priorities change. And so it's a dynamic document. Just to give you a little background on the process, we initially get the, we work with Dennis's department, and the folks there help us, give us an idea what the revenue estimates are, and kind of set our ceilings in various funds that we have, that we can budget projects out of. We, then we asked the department to send out what kind of projects they'd like to see. They- see, the requests. This year, we've got roughly a little over thirty million dollars worth of requests. Most of that in the general fund. Unfortunately, we weren't able to budget all of those. We met with each department individually in March and investigated the projects, to kind of flush them out. This year, we really made a concerted effort to really nail down, you know, what the real costs are. Quite often, we would get proposed projects that weren't fully thought through in the past, and we really worked hard. We worked with the Building Department this year and General Services to really kind of include them and get really good estimates, and make sure there's not a lot of things that would get forgotten, you know, building permit issues that may not, that may not come up till later, that would cost a lot and really affect the budget of the projects. We narrowed down these requests, and we presented them to Homer, and Homer and the staff went through them with us, and we came up with a prepared preliminary CIP, which we're talking about tonight, which essentially shows about twenty-two point six million in new appropriations and fourteen point seven rebudget. And tonight, we're presenting it to you. And as this process evolves, we'll revise it in what's commonly called the checklist process.
Steve, in that fourteen point seven million in rebudgets, how did that relate to the total budget from last year?
Oh, not really sure what that percentage is.
Or just what's the number, was it?
Yeah, it was forty. Yeah, and I should introduce Jamie Pollard, who was really instrumental in putting this together and helping us, guide us through the processes. It's a really different document this year, which you'll see as we go further through the presentation. Of course, the delivery issues, and we talked a little bit about this during our priority and goal-setting meeting, you know, we're a very unique city geographically, which causes a lot of issues in the delivery of projects. The tight quarters in the older sections of town, of course, our sensitivity to the public and phasing, trying to not do things during peak times and trying to get projects delivered with minimal disruption. We also have issues of project creep, where we tend to add into the work scope once we get there, we-
Aren't those usually suggestions by council members?
I didn't want to specifically say that, but yes, it's, well, it's kind of like remodeling a kitchen and say, wouldn't it be nice if we could do this, too? And a lot of times, it does make a lot of sense, you know? We'll admit that the council does have a lot of good ideas, so. One of our delivery issues is certainly is the balancing of the span of control. We certainly want to maintain our level of quality while delivering as much as we can with the available manpower that we have. And another issue that you probably heard a lot about is we are having trouble recruiting and, you know, getting resources, and not only just hiring employees, but a lot of the consultant world is very busy as well. There's some trends out there with the baby boomers retiring that I think are going to affect us, not only in this budget, but future budgets to come.
Steve, may I drop back for a moment to the fourteen point seven million in rebudgets? Can you give me just sort of a qualitative view, or if you have specifics on the nature of those rebudgets? I'm assuming some of them have to do with just projects that were more than one year in length, and then some of them have to do perhaps with delays and whatnot. Can you talk a little more about that?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Councilman Hen. The, you're correct, I think, in your assessment. There are, you know, this is a one-year kind of snapshot of what we do. We have projects that will extend many, many years. In fact, a good example of that is a project we've been working on for several years now is a project to widen the Jamboree Road Bridge over the seventy-three. That project actually started probably about three years ago, maybe even longer, four or five years ago, and continues today. Some of these projects are very long in phases, right through processing, environmental issues, permitting issues through the Coastal Commission, and these kinds of things. So they do take more than an annual budget to accomplish. Some of it also is that, you know, projects that maybe just, we just couldn't get to. There are times when projects take on more effort than we had originally had planned, maybe due to a problem in design, or a major change in the project midpoint, or even a contractor that isn't performing very well. That requires a lot of staff time to keep the project moving forward. Good example of that one would be the CDM Main Beach Project. Took an extreme amount of resources on the staff's part in order to keep the project moving forward. So what happens is certain projects do get set aside. We try to, we try to, you know, deliver them as quickly as possible. We try to look at which projects, we know our priorities in the community, and try to push those forward, but some of the projects just, we just don't get to.
So can we, can we just get some idea, then, in the aggregates, about the number to sort out of that fourteen point seven million, projects that simply were multi-year projects, you had to rebudget the current year portion? And then projects that were delayed for a couple, three reasons, and you can specify, I don't care. And I'm not looking for some big elegant analysis here. I'm just looking to get some idea of the big chunks, why they were delayed.
Steve, also, you've had several retirements and haven't been able to fill a position, so hasn't that also impacted your ability to deliver a number of these projects? Yeah, that, yes, Councilman Webb, that is true. And, you know, I think the public process for recruitment is somewhat cumbersome. It does take a lot of time to fill people, fill positions when folks retire. We had two key retirements. Our Development Services and Transportation Manager, Rich Edmondson, retired, as well as our City Engineer, Bill Patapoff, which, you know, really, really put a lot of pressure on the organization. We also have another individual that is out on disability. So, yeah, there is, you know, you authorized two positions to be filled last year, and it took us, we had to do recruitment twice, because the first time, we didn't get enough good candidates. So, you know, sometimes these recruitments take us up to six, eight months. So that's been a factor as well. We can certainly, you know, as we go through this process, I'm going to kind of highlight a little bit on some of the projects, and maybe we can talk a little more in depth about some of the major projects that we're rebudgeting and why that happens. I also want to point out that we've also included a schedule this year, which is key to our new budget package. And what we intend to do is use that as essentially a performance and measurement tool, where we're going to give you quarterly updates of where we are with these projects and how they're progressing. And if you look at that master schedule, which is included in the budget book, you'll see that a lot of projects do extend into the next fiscal year and beyond. So quite often, a lot of times, we'll start a project, we know it might be a five-year program, so it keeps coming back. And as I go through this, maybe I can point out some of those projects for you. Some of the constraints that we're up against, of course, you know, limited resources. I know Dennis is printing money as fast as he can, but it still doesn't keep up with us. We have some real market economic issues that are out there today, while, you know, things like the steel prices have leveled off, but now we've got concrete prices going through the roof. Timber is going down, but we don't use a lot of that in what we do, mostly concrete and steel. Of course, the regulatory environmental issues that do take time, as I mentioned, processing something through Coastal is, at best, a six-month process, if it has to go to them for discretionary approvals. And then, of course, we have the time and seasonal issues of weather in the winter, the crowds in the summer at the beach, we've got various events, the boat parade, Fourth of July, we got to stay away from the schools. So we're always juggling the schedule to try to make things happen. And sometimes, if we miss one of those windows, we have to defer the project. It's like if we can't get it done before summer, then we got to push it off to the fall. And that's another reason why we end up with rebudgets. Back to, like I mentioned, the master project schedule, which is included in the document, it'll show you that there's about one hundred and forty-one projects, eighty-seven of which are existing progress, projects that are in progress, with fifty-four new projects being proposed. And one thing I want to point out, it doesn't include any of the large-scale projects that we've been talking about for, which could be included in the master facilities plan. And I guess, as I kind of stated before with those major building projects, we would anticipate the funding coming through some kind of a bonding of COPs, and we would also include manpower in that package as well to deliver these projects. So those projects, at this point in time, aren't being proposed in this budget, as well as some of the general plan implementation projects, the intersections that have been identified as part of the general plan implementation. We have not put any of those projects in the program as of this point in time. We're really waiting to see how they flush out as far as the traffic impact study, where we're going to be putting together concepts for each of these projects, as well as cost estimates. Once that is accomplished, and we anticipate that to be August, we'll probably be bringing that back to the table, to the council, to say, okay, how do you want us to proceed with these projects?
Steve, does that include intersections in the airport business area?
Yeah, several of those intersections would be included. Yeah. And we're working on funding the opportunities for that as well with the-
Right, and I understand there's a lot of phasing in and kind of moving pieces, but that did catch my attention.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Steve, what is the schedule for the facilities financing plan to come to the council in terms of the overall, long-term capital view on these projects?
Well, I think our desire was to take it to the Council Finance Committee and have you take a look at it and see if you wanted to make any recommendations in terms of changes. So, you know, I think we can do that whenever the agenda permits.
So do you have any philosophy in mind as far as, you say you're going to come back to the council in August and ask us how we want to proceed? I assume that some percentage of those large-scale projects are going to go ahead with all of the things we're talking about. Have you guys talked or thought about any strategy on how you're going to deal with that? Are you looking at contracting out, hiring more staff? Philosophically, where are you heading at?
Well, I guess that's part of this process, is, you know, the projects that are identified, how soon do we want to implement them in advance of whatever, you know, potential congestion we're going to be facing? You know, one of, part of that process is developing the fees and accumulating those fees so we can do these projects. I guess if, you know, if the council, if it was the council's desire, you know, I guess we could finance some of these projects and do them in advance and pay ourselves back with those fees. But I think it's really, we'd really be looking the council's direction to say which way we want to go. And of course, I think, you know, I think I would probably heavily utilize consulting, outside consulting, and try to manage as many of these projects as we can. I think, like I stated earlier, we have an infinite manpower level. If council desires to expand that, we can do that. But what we can, we only can manage so many projects and do it successfully with quality in mind. Otherwise, we're going to, you know, the quality level will suffer. As I had also mentioned, the schedule that we're including in this budget, we're going to be updating it quarterly, and you'll be getting reports as the how and why projects may be on time or on budget, what the issues might be if they're not. And that way, you'll have a little bit better idea of how we're doing as far as delivering the projects. And back to the staffing issue, City Engineer heads up the CIP group. There's nine engineers. We use quite a few design, outside design consultants. We currently have three contract project managers working for us that are managing projects. We also have contract project management, the Fire Station, and Newport Coast Community Center, and the Back Bay Science Center are all currently managed by outside folks. We have four inspectors, and we occasionally have a contract inspector that helps us fill in. And as Councilman Webb pointed out, we do have the vacancy of the City Engineer. We have one principal engineer that's currently out on disability, and we have another, that would be Gunther. We have another principal engineer that will be retiring soon, Lloyd Dalton, who's our acting City Engineer. So we've got some real challenges ahead of us as far as manpower, and we're probably going to have to utilize the outside services to kind of fill in to keep us moving forward while we recruit for these positions.
Steve, just to make the point, we might be looking at a contract situation for a contract City Engineer?
We could very well go that way. In fact, we're exploring all of our avenues to see where, you know, how we can best deliver all these projects at this time. We're, again, we've had some real difficulties recruiting, and it's not just isolated here with the city. I think a lot of cities are experiencing this. It's very difficult to attract and retain good folks, and we're going to try to do the best we can. But in the meantime, we want to keep things moving forward, so we might have some creative solutions out in front of you at some point in the future here to see how we're going to accomplish all of this. Just a quick, a little pie chart here to kind of show you where all the funds are. Dennis kind of went through this quite a bit. A good chunk of our budget is the general fund, but there's also a lot of special funds, Mezzaram Gas Tax, the Tidlins Money, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, some of our funds that are, we also show a good chunk of money from contributions, that would be the grants. And there's a very large portion there that's kind of, kind of throws off the pie chart a little bit, the Santa Ana Heights projects, because there's about a seven million dollar hit there that is for the undergrounding. So it kind of shows unusually large, but it's kind of like a one-time deal. So again, we're looking at about three point, thirty-seven point three million dollar in new projects, our total projects, one hundred and forty-plus projects. We're emphasizing the traffic signal modernization, that's one of the key areas we're working on. We're also looking at increased programming for the capital maintenance and repair. We're trying to get caught up on sidewalk repairs, staying current with our pavement master plan, and trying to do some major repairs on some of our facilities, which will probably be more than the Band-Aid, but hopefully keep things going till we can implement our major facilities program and get some of those buildings replaced. A lot of, a lot of things that aren't included are the major projects, as I had mentioned, that are still kind of out there, that pending some determination or prioritization from the city council. Newport Center Park comes to mind. Where are we growing with Marina Park? And I think we're talking about that tonight, the Sunset Ridge Park. So those kinds of things, once we get more direction, we'll come back into the CIP as you give us that direction to do so. This year, we got a little different format. We tried to make it more of a user-friendly document. In the past, we were organized by fund. The problem with that is that projects appeared on multiple pages. It was tough to tell where the money was coming from or what, you know, if you looked at it, say, hey, isn't there more money here? Well, yeah, that's, you have to look at this other fund. Well, what we're trying to do is put it all on one page per project. It also reduces the size of the document, which saves us a couple bucks, I guess. But we're also trying to integrate it in with our project schedule. We want the project schedule to be a part of this capital program. So there is, like I said before, a kind of a measurement of how we're doing and how we're delivering this project, these projects. Just to kind of go through these, and jump in at any time if there's a particular project of interest. I didn't list every single project in each category, but I thought I'd maybe highlight a few here. In the facilities, we have a one point two million of new appropriations, and that's over all the funds, and rebudgets of seven hundred thousand. We're close to two million dollars' worth of work. We're close to $2 million worth of work. Most of that relates to repairs in the public safety facilities that we need to keep, you know, to maintain, things like water pipe replacements, generator replacements, security video systems, and some basic remodeling. We also have some work to do to keep the senior center moving forward, the CYC, and we're also looking at replacing a little Corona restroom, and we're budgeting that in this year as well. The central library also, we're looking at some electrical changeouts, including a generator and some HVAC issues that they have, and some basic stuff here at City Hall just to keep us limping along.
Steve, a couple of questions. I'm assuming the money to be spent on Oasis Center is in the nature of emergency repair-type needs in view of the fact that we're actively working on a replacement for that facility?
Yeah, in fact, that particular project is really just the retrofit of the entryway and the automatic door system, and most of that's a part of a re-budget, actually. So there are little odds and ends that we're working on across the city like that that need to happen. There's no major investment going on, obviously, as you stated. You know, we're hopefully going to replace that building.
And why do we have a generator in the central library?
Well, the central library was designed with a sump. There was a groundwater issue, and at the time, I think it was shown to be more cost-effective to deal with pumping water out of the basement rather than try to waterproof the whole foundation. So there is a situation where if the power goes out, we have a real problem with, you know, that sump filling up and potentially flooding key areas in the basement of the library. So we're proposing that we add a small generator to that, and let's see, I'm looking for the price here.
As a veteran of basements in the Midwest, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we're looking at about $50,000 for that particular item.
Just for some additional information, that basement, the water intrusion is from the water table. They built it down below the water table.
Isn't there an existing generator there now?
There's a portable generator that gets plugged in, but...
That's right.
What we're looking at right now is something more permanent that'll go off on its own in case it happens during an off hour. And included in that is also some, unfortunately, the electrical switching throughout the building was kind of an odd design, and it's all failing right now. So we're also, along with the generator, we're changing out all of the switching, which is unfortunate, but something has to be dealt with. Streets and drainage, another category we put together, and again, this spans over a lot of different funds. Here's where, you know, there's a big number for rebudgets, and that's where these projects that come into play that have been planned over the years, like the Burt Street rehabilitation. We actually got AHRP funding for that, and we've been carrying it for a year or two. What happens is the state gives you that money about a year in advance, and it goes for a two-year period beyond that. So you have essentially three years to spend the money, but it keeps showing up in our budget. We also have a big grant for retrofit of the bridges, a big number in there. The Superior Medians is another big project in there that's kind of multi-yeared, that is being carried over, although we're getting close to moving forward with that, and we hope to get that right at the end of the fiscal year. We also have money that we've been setting aside for the Irvine Avenue realignment that the county is actually the lead on. So we've been banking that money for quite a long time as well. But also in that is a lot of new projects this year where we're going to be repaving East Bluff Drive, a bunch of streets south of Coast Highway and Cronin Del Mar that really need it. There are some alleys in Balboa Village that are finally getting taken care of, so there's a lot of activity. Again, the bridge improvements, most of that is seismic retrofit money that we're hopefully going to get from the state. And what's on tap right now is to upgrade the Jamboree Road Bridge over the, the two bridges, actually, over the creek at the top of the Upper Bay.
Steve, we just led a big contract for Pelican Hills Road and Newport Coast Drive. Do we have any follow-up money available once the study's completed to commence that work?
We haven't budgeted that project because we're waiting to see what the number is, and we'll probably bring that back to you separately if we get any preliminary numbers before this budget's finalized. We can bring it back to you, and we can add that in. But right now, we don't have any numbers, so we were just going to wait until we find out exactly what we need to do there.
Steve, as I recall, I think the consultants were going to do a kind of Plan A and Plan B to give us a couple of alternatives.
That's correct, and they're moving forward with that right now, and we also, and we're also pleased to hear that, we're hearing information from the adjacent homeowner association that they are willing to essentially dedicate whatever needed property we need along there. So that'll be a real plus in that, reducing the cost.
I see tied structures. What is, can you describe what you mean by that?
The tied structures, I think we're doing some bulkhead replacements here. Just flipping through this real quick. 38th Street tidal structure, we're going to try to put in a motorized tide valve there. We have some bulkhead repairs.
Just repairs, not new ones?
Yeah. Yeah, these essentially are repair, repair-type facilities. We're also carrying over some funds of work that we didn't get to this year at the 26th Street and some other areas that...
Do you know offhand how much money is being, going to be budgeted for harbor improvements, bulkheads, those kinds of things?
I could probably separate that money out. I don't have that figure with me, and I can get that for you. But, you know, the storm drains and the tide structures together are about 635. We could probably, you know, guesstimate that it's somewhere 50/50 in there.
Okay, has the city ever looked comprehensive, multi-year, as far as what needs to be done in the harbor?
Oh, yes. I mean, we've pursued a program of upgrading, for example, the bulkheads around Balboa Island. Those are city-owned structures that we've done, and for the most part, we've repaired all of those. I mean, in fact, I think we did the last phase, was it last year or the year before? So we're in good shape there. You know, most of, the majority of the bulkheads within the city are privately owned. They're not owned by the city, and it's really not our, the city's responsibility to maintain and upgrade those. So we're really primarily looking at street ends and areas that are adjacent to public parks.
What about things like public docks? Have we ever looked at that?
Usually, the public docks are maintained by the General Services Department. They've actually reconstructed several docks and have a program in their overall maintenance program, as I understand it. Mark Armond, I'm sure, could describe it better than I could, but I think that each one of them, as they have deteriorated, have been replaced, repaired, and upgraded. So I think they've done, at least in my opinion of the observations, they've done a really good job.
Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape.
You don't have to do that. Probably, they're good for 15 or 20 years, and they've replaced, what, four or five in the last six, seven years?
Dave, will some of these issues be part of the harbor area management plan?
All right, well, let's move this along here. There's a lot of the traffic improvements, and we've kind of grouped them differently. We've got, in this is the maintenance and upgrade of the signal system, the neighborhood traffic calming projects, as well as whatever pedestrian improvements and signage projects. And as you can see, the major effort here is the signalization, which is 1.8 million dollars. A lot of that is grant funding. We're also looking at some basic, you know, basic maintenance improvements, replacements. As their signal systems get older, we have to rewire and replace a lot of those systems. And a good portion to signing and monumentation and wayfinding, that we're moving forward with those projects this year after many years of planning for those. And of course, I think a key area is the traffic management in the neighborhoods that we're looking at, traffic calming improvements. The first phase is finally moving forward, which is in Newport Heights, and we're hoping to get a lot of that work done this summer.
On the monuments, these are like the ones that, when you come into town thing?
Yeah.
Newport Beach or Cronin Del Mar and...
The entry monuments and all the signing programs.
Is the, is that signal at Iris? Is that in the pedestrian improvements there, or is that in the...
Yeah, it's in the traffic signal section, and it's, we've got about 280,000 set aside.
So is that under the signal modernization or installation or pedestrian improvement foot category? Is that in?
Where is it?
It's in the pedestrian improvements, so...
Is that just going to be for flashing yellow lights on the...
Well, I think at this time, we're proposing a full signal because of the traffic engineering report that we've gotten indicates that that would be the best solution. The flashing lights at Iris are, would tend to function like a traffic signal, and we have some real safety concerns if we went, but we're still willing to look at that.
Are you going to signalize both irises?
Yes, it'll be like Goldenrod.
Okay.
The Bristol Street Sign Bridges, I was noticing we're doing a study, and then after the completion of the study, it's about three months before the work begins. Is that just to accommodate a bid, or is that...
Well, I think this year, in this year's budget, we actually have 100,000 set aside to actually, you know, build that. So we can look on the schedule real quick and find out when that is, but... Harbors, parks, harbors and beaches, we've got a lot of stuff going on there as well. We don't have, like I said, the major stuff there. We still are moving forward with the design. The big number here is really Mariners Park, which we're actually going to construct, and we have broken that into two phases. We're going to go with the ball field first, and then the rest of the park and the restroom is kind of a second phase. We're, tonight, we're going to talk a little more about Sunset Ridge Park design. Hopefully, that'll be moving forward. However, Newport Center Park might be something that stays on hold for now. We also are going to re-energize the, I guess what we're calling the Santa Ana Heights Passive Park. It's also been called the Upper Bay View Park. It's got a lot of names, but whatever it ends up being named, we're planning to move forward with it. Along with some miscellaneous projects for playground equipment and lighting and fencing. The big harbor improvements include the Rhine Channel wharf repairs and the public dock, and we're hoping we're going to be able to...
Is that project going to happen this year?
Yeah, I think we're ready to go. If you approve the budget, we'll have the money.
That project's been re-budgeted every year.
Steve, with the Rhine Channel and all the water quality problems with the sediments and everything there, how is, is any construction there going to affect that? Are we concerned about that aspect of it?
Well, most of the repair is really above the water line. The stringers underneath are rotten, most of the, I think the piles, most of the piles are okay. There may be a few that need to be replaced. And as far as the dock, the dock will be a floating dock, so there won't be a lot of intrusion there either. But to answer Mayor Rosansky's question about that, we had this in the budget for several years because we were really hoping to get boating waterway funds, grant funds. And I think we just got to the point where we were tired of asking for the money. They weren't giving it to us, so we decided to try to fund it this year solely with city funds.
Well, no, we took the boating and waterway money out of it last year.
Right.
But now the price has gone up quite a bit over what your estimate was, and have you identified as the revenue source for that, the money that the Coastal Commission is exacting out of the 919 Bayside project as opposed to coming out of the general fund like we did before, or wherever? I forget what the revenue source was.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dave. I was just going to say, yeah, that is, that's one of the things that's helping us move this project forward. But another part of that delay was also that we couldn't move that wharf project forward till we did the repair, I mean, the public dock project, till we did the wharf repairs. The wharf repairs turned out to be a little more extensive than we had thought initially as well, so that repair money...
So is that 919 Bayside money, is that going to cover both the wharf repair and the floating dock?
Well, no, the wharf repair, we already, we have budgeted through rebudgets. We have 330,000 for the wharf repair from rebudgets that we accumulated. Part of that is, it's actually a consolidation of monies that we had already spent. The 240 that's coming from that project, the other project, will go towards the dock. So we think we have enough funds now.
I have a couple of specific questions. I'm looking at the timeline that you gave us, Steve, which, by the way, I'm very glad for that enhancement in your presentation materials. It's really terrific. You know, we've had a, we've had a project of some significance to the community having to do with beach cameras. And if I'm reading your timeline correctly, I'm on page two of the timeline, I see here, beach observation camera system, project to begin appears to me in, it looks like February or March of 2008. I was thinking that we were intending to move forward a lot faster than that with that project. Is there a reason that it's been scheduled out that far?
Councilman Hinn, I don't think that is the same camera project that we're talking about for the...
That's the lifeguard one, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that the lifeguard?
Oh, that's, so that's not the Cronin Del Mar Beach in Peninsula Point?
That's right.
That project is apparently not represented in here yet. Is that right?
No, but I think the police department is coming to the council at the next meeting with a, with a bid for that.
Okay, so that would be...
Because we wanted to get it up and operating by June 1st.
So that might go on the supplemental list. Or no, I guess that's an amendment for this fiscal.
That's right.
Okay. And then with regard, I'm on page five now, and I've got Fire Department Early Notification Alerting System. And these don't have dollars associated, that might be one enhancement, Steve, you could put on this, some sort of a column for total project cost or some such thing. But in any event, I'm curious what's included in that.
That's actually for Station 5, Station 7. It is not community awareness...
This is not emergency preparedness warning system?
For fire personnel, they're going to apply, it gives them about 45 seconds to jump on the run so they can get to the roof, so...
Okay.
And it's, it looks like it...
All right.
And I think there are some costs. If you look in kind of the items underneath design and award, sometimes we try to show relative costs in there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But we can get some more detail in there. And this is, this is a document that's in process of being refined, so we can certainly add to it, and we will do that.
That's all I have.
Water quality, environmental, we kind of lumped them into a different section because we know how important these projects are to the city, and we wanted to kind of have special sections for all of this. A lot of this is a continuation of projects that are already ongoing. There's a 1.1 million dollar re-budget. Some of this is money that we, the Seminole Slough is money that we anticipate getting. We're hoping we'll get a contribution towards that through one of the various future development agreements or grants. And we wanted to show that on the table because we want to take advantage of the Army Corps of Engineer project, which we think might be starting within the next year or so. We want to, we want to be ready for that. The other projects that are still out there are the Buck Gully Maintenance Road and Wetlands Project, which we tried to bring to you last year, but apparently we didn't estimate enough funds for that. There were a lot of environmental issues that weren't anticipated that caused that to rise. We had to add money to it this year.
Well, what was the, we did get a bid, didn't we, last year for somebody for $350,000?
Yeah, I think we got one bid.
And so we rejected that bid, but we're saying we think we can cover a more complicated project for 250?
Yeah, I think we sat down with staff and we tried to actually refine the project and put some cost-saving measures in there because we think that we can bring... and put some cost-saving measures in there because we think that we can bring that cost down. So Bob Stein's heading that one up, and he's very confident that that's the number. I hope he's right.
Does that include goat rental?
That's a new addition. See, there's an example of project creep.
Maybe we can bag the fertilizer, recoup it over.
I've got a question. You don't have to flip back on the slides. It actually goes back to the parks, harbors, and beaches. Are we making any assumptions that we're going to get boating and waterway money that we never get?
I don't believe we are.
Okay, so we'll abandon that altogether?
Yeah, I think they've made it pretty clear to us that we don't even get close to making the cut, so, you know, we probably put a lot, as a city, have put a lot of money into those programs, but apparently, we're not getting much back. And then, you know, as I said, a lot of the projects that are continuing, the Upper Bay Harbor Management Plan, the areas of special biological significance, the implementation assessments, and as well as the Big Canyon Restoration continues. So where there's a lot of ongoing projects, a lot of, not a lot of new monies coming in, but we're still hopeful that we'll be able to pursue more grants in the future. Water and wastewater, pretty straightforward for us, coming out of the, both of the enterprise funds, about equal number of new appropriations as rebudgets, a lot of it due to timing. As I said earlier, we try to combine our projects with other projects to minimize the disruption. Some of the, some of our projects have been delayed, and others have been moved forward, but we have, we have a considerable number of master planned projects that we're going to be bringing to you. Some of the key projects that we're looking at here are the bay crossing, water transmission replacement, some water main replacement in the oceanfront alleys that will be done in conjunction with some of the underground districts if they move forward.
The water well rehabilitation, is that just a mechanical thing, or is it saltwater intrusion that we're working on?
The water well rehabilitation of our wells in Fountain Valley, occasionally, they need to get refurbished. They get, they get filled, they get clogged up by various, and they have to be various chemicals and minerals and things, and they have to be cleaned. So I think we're, George is in the audience, and he can elaborate, but we're kind of doing it a couple each year until we get to rehab all of our wells in Fountain Valley.
Steve, I think that one in particular, we have a real problem with in that it isn't operating right now, so we need to go and replace a pump and clean it out.
We need to stay with that, that cheap well water. In our, on the wastewater side, we're looking at Buck Gully Force Main replacement, which is probably a key one because of its proximity to, to the areas of special biological significance.
Didn't we just do something with that a couple of years ago?
We fixed one of the crossings, I believe.
But didn't we do something in the, with the pump so we could handle more?
I'm creating a pump station. This is our...
This is the line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, these are the lines. And there's also, there's other miscellaneous pump station improvements that we're working on as well. And some of the miscellaneous projects that, you know, don't really fall into any categories. The, like I said, that big number, the Santa Ana Heights Utility Undergrounding is moving forward, and that's, of course, money from the, from the RDA, oil, some oilfield improvements to keep production moving forward. Oil seems to be a good thing for us these days. We get quite a bit of revenue from that. And some miscellaneous projects, as you can see, equipment purchases, computers, slope repairs, those kinds of things. And again, we're looking at $37 million of projects, is a little less than last year, which was 40 million, 87 existing projects and 54 new ones. And again, our schedule shows, in fact, I should have pointed out on our schedule, just to kind of give you a little overview on this, the projects that are shown in red are new projects, and the black ones are the ones that are being rebudgeted or ones that are working through across fiscal years. And also on there, you'll see that there's a blue square that shows, that's essentially design. There could be a green square that is associated with permitting or environmental documentation, and the, the red rectangles represent the construction. And the diamonds are our proposed award dates that we're shooting for, to bring to you and to get an award to move the construction contracts forward, so. So that's pretty much our presentation, and be happy to answer any of the questions that you have.
If there are no questions on the CIP, I did want to drop back to the regular budget for just a moment. Dennis, you and I talked the other day, and I would like to see this, you know, before we get to the next budget discussion, which is essentially a P and L presentation on water, wastewater, and refuse collection that identifies basically whatever we would consider to be the revenue line, the operating expenses, the CIP, and below that'll net down to some number, more or less, you know, a negative or positive number. And then there's a number for CIP, and below that, I'd like to see reserve changes. So, associated with those three operations. And so I'd like to see '06, '07 estimate, '07, '08 budget with that structure on those three entities. And then I'd also like to work with you to get a better understanding of the reserve changes in the internal service funds. So maybe we can work together on that. If you can give me a call tomorrow, we can try to figure out how to structure that.
Councilman Hen, I've already spoken to Dan about that.
I'd be glad to work directly with Dan, too. Whatever works easiest for him.
Okay. We'll contact you.
Councilman Curry?
Yes, Steve, are we going to have another session to go through, sort of project by project or section by section on the CIP to look at that? Is that the plan?
Well, I think this was, this was kind of our, our opportunity to really talk about that, and, you know, we can talk about specific projects, but I don't think home grid plan to another session unless that's something you guys want.
We can lead off at the next study session with that, just kind of a page by page to see if there are any questions.
Mr. Hen, lights? Councilman Hen? We had a request for lights. Okay, so I guess we'll be discussing CIP a little bit more in our next study session. Are there any other questions? Anybody has a staff before we begin to adjourn to our closed session? All right, anybody here from the public that would like to comment on what they've heard tonight or this afternoon? Seeing no one, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.